And we're live.
All right, I have to say that over and so sorry. Now we're officially starting meeting and Ian's gonna do some housekeeping first.
Great, so I first wanted to actually introduce a numerous member of the commission, which is Courtney Grisell and appointed by Mike Clark.
Sure, Courtney Grisell. I have been in Eugene Springfield area for more than half of my life, so twenty five years. And I started actually over on the Springfield side in public sector, so I worked up as a planner in the beginning and eventually into running the Economic Development Department in Springfield. So I hope you go to downtown often because it's a pride point. I now work in the private sector for a wood products company and landowner of timberlands. And so I am just excited to be part of the conversation and included in the work that you all have been doing for quite a while, making good impact.
Welcome.
So with that, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. Just a quick housekeeping note before we begin this evening's meeting. For the members of public who are joining the meeting via computer, device, or phone, please be advised that your microphone, webcam, and phone are automatically muted when you enter the meeting as an attendee. If you wish to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting and haven't already done so, please raise your virtual hand now to join the speaker's queue in one of two ways. For those viewing the meeting on a computer, laptop, or other device, click once on the blue hand icon. For those listening to the meeting on a phone, press star nine. We will lower hands as speakers are called upon. When the public comment begins, we will announce your name and unmute your microphone. You will have two minutes to speak, after which your microphone will again be muted. Regarding the chat and QA functionality of Zoom, please note that attendees will not be able to use these features. Lastly, in accordance with the passage of HB forty two twelve, this meeting is being recorded and recordings will be posted to the Sustainability Commission website and the city's YouTube channel. As always, feel free to contact the Sustainability Commission if there is testimony you were not able to provide or wish to get to us in a different format. And with that, I turn the meeting over to the chairman.
All right, thank you, Ian. So first, we're going to do the land acknowledgement, I believe.
That was me.
What was you?
Yeah. So I have three things to share. One is history of Thanksgiving from the Wampanoag perspective. They're the tribe that had to contact on Massachusetts. There's a link, so if you want to check that out and learn some more. The second one is something you could do if you were interested. There's a petition right now asking President Biden to grant clemency to Leonard Peltier. He's the oldest political prisoner in the US and who's involved in the American Indian Movement a very long time ago. So that is, the link is there. And the last one is a local thing. There's a webinar coming up December fourth. The Lower Columbia River Art and Placemaking, it's intentional assertion of indigenous lands, place, and relations. And I think that's true OSU. I did this a while ago, so I forget actually, but it's a webinar, so you can watch it anywhere.
Thank you. That's great. I like that there's like lots of things. I like when there's multiples and lots of things that people look like on. Right, Dennis, you probably read that, but you're on for next time.
Next time is not to again.
I know, you've got so much time to make it wonderful. All right. So we have one action item to review and approve the agenda in October meeting minutes. Press remove. Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? It's like John, everybody's raising.
Yep.
Alrighty, so the next part of our meeting is public comment. And we've got, looks like four online and sending one.
One person.
Oh, one person, okay.
So we're going to start with online. And so Zach, please go ahead.
Ian, you're doing this.
Hi, my name's Zach Mulholland. I'm the Bethel Neighborhood Representative on the Golden Garden Parks Advisory Committee, advising on the development of a sports complex there. I know you're gonna get a presentation later today, but I just wanted to share a couple of things. You should have received a letter from Lynn Woodrich, the active Bethel Community Neighborhood Association Chair, sharing the neighborhood's desire for a minimum five hundred foot buffer around the Northwest Pawtucket habitat and no artificial turf on the site. With regards to your conversation tonight and looking at the matrix of things to include in a triple bottom line analysis, the matrix looks pretty good, but I wanted to specifically call out a couple of items. And I've emailed this to you as well. So six PPD is a rubber tire additive associated with salmon die-offs that would be contained in any crumb rubber infill. So making sure six PPD gets looked at. Looking at the views of organizations representing professional athletes like the NFL Players Association and the US Women's Soccer Team, both of which advocate against artificial turf due to increased rates of sports injury, heat island and global warming effects, artificial turf is much hotter than natural grass. And as the planet gets warmer and we have more and more days above eighty degrees and above ninety degrees, looking at how that's going to affect playability, both now but also in the future. Looking at local neighborhood views, many people who live closest to the park want to maintain the park as their valued natural space and artificial doesn't turf doesn't fit into a natural area. And the development should strive to not undermine the quality of the natural area. And lastly, the effect on turtles, birds, including migratory birds, fish, and people. Some people do eat the fish in the ponds, so any bioaccumulation issues related to microplastics and other substances that they might end up ingesting. With the Northwest Pawtucket having lost ninety nine percent of its habitat and up for listing under the Endangered Species Act, taking the species into account is critical. And just thank you so much for your time and for looking at this issue.
Great, thank you, Zach. Patty, please go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, actually, it says Patty, but it's her partner Deborah McGee speaking. I'm at home with COVID or I would be there. I'm sorry to not be in person, but I did want to make a comment. I attended the Golden Gardens presentation at Prairie Mountain School last Wednesday and want to appreciate and give kudos to the city staff. They did a great job of presenting and it was very informational, a lot of good turnout. My main concern is about the playing fields and the artificial turf. It was mentioned that the fourteen playing fields will constitute forty four acres of plastic turf, if that's what the council decides. And my main concern is, you know, do some Googling. There's like fifteen carcinogens, neurotoxins, all kinds of really bad, bad things for the environment in that artificial turf. I'm also well aware that as more and more of us drive electric cars, the fossil fuel industry is going to find more and more ways to try to give us their plastic. And we know it's not good for humans. It's not good for turtles. It's not good for the planet. So I really hope you will not further burden our home and especially the Bethel area, which is already assaulted by many not good environmental harms. So please take careful consideration to consider the value of having natural soil-based turf. It's better for everyone. Thank you.
James, please go, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. State and Billy Commissioners and staff, I agree with Deb McGee. Staff did a great job at the presentation of the Golden Gate of the Golden Gardens Park Facility. And they talked about the possible use of crumb rubber or artificial turf. Scientific studies have proven that health and injury risks from using artificial turf or crumb rubber sports fields. The toxic recycled tire rubber particles get airborne and ingested, inhaled, and have been detected in ambient air and in saliva samples. The contents of crumb rubber are PFAS forever, chemicals, bifanella, phthalates, polyaromatic hydrocarbons, VOCs, lead, zinc, and fossil fuel products in the plastic. Foot and ankle injuries increase due to unforgiving surfaces as well as skin burns and abrasions. Crumb rubber chemical components are soluble in water, which contaminate the groundwater bodies and soils. Temperatures of artificial turf fields are on the average of twenty to fifty degrees hotter than natural turf and have been measured at a hundred and thirty degrees Fahrenheit. The US, as Zach said, the US Women's Soccer League are no longer required to play on artificial turf fields and the NFL Players Association prefers natural grass to artificial turf due to injuries from unforgiving turf surfaces. These fields are very expensive to install, have to be raked by machine weekly, dependent on usage, and have to be replaced every ten to fifteen years. I urge you to recommend an alternative field for surface than artificial turf and crumb rubber due to the human health and environmental reasons and to protect the waterways and habitat at Golden Gardens Park. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jim. Martha and Pete, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. My name is Peter Dragovich. And I have some comments also on the turf, artificial versus natural. Two months ago, Clean Water Action, in an article titled "The Turf is Artificial But the Harm is Very Real", stated, quote, "Artificial turf contains hundreds of harmful chemicals like lead, heavy metals, benzene, arsenic, volatile organic compounds, PFAS and phthalates, some of which are cancer-causing, parent carcinogens, neurotoxins, and/or endocrine disruptors. Even new safer, quote, "alternatives contain carcinogens and neurotoxins." Unfortunately, there are gaps in what we know about synthetic turf because manufacturers are not required by law to reveal all of the chemicals used. Some manufacturers claim that their artificial turf is now PFAS-free, but this has not been supported by research. One scientific review of synthetic turf research found that in fourteen studies that tested for lead, all contained lead with the levels varying between playing fields. According to the US Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, there is no safe blood level, safe blood lead level. Outdoor artificial turf can get moldy over time and experience a buildup of animal and bird feces and related harms, thus requiring ongoing disinfection. This type of turf can also reach dangerous temperatures of over a hundred and sixty degrees Fahrenheit in the summer sun, while natural grass rarely exceeds a hundred degrees Fahrenheit. Kids have complained of skin burns and extreme heat penetrating their athletic shoes. What is put on the field does not stay on the field. Synthetic turf breaks down into smaller pieces, including microplastics less than five millimeters. They are carried long distances by the wind, leach in the water systems, storm drains, and contaminate the soil. Natural grass has the benefit of mitigating climate change. It has a cooling effect, oxygenates the air, captures carbon, and absorbs water more readily, which helps to reduce flooding and stormwater runoff. End quote. I'd like to add to that, natural grass has the additional benefit that is not made from fossil fuels. And in conclusion, the Clean Water Action article says, quote, "The Mount Sinai Children's Environmental Health Center at the Institute for Climate Change recommends against the installation of artificial turf playing surfaces and fields due to the uncertainties surrounding the safety of these products and the potential for dangerous heat and chemical exposures." End quote. Thank you for your time.
Lynn, please go ahead. Lynn, can you hear us?
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw a name at the bottom that said Ian Penn. So I didn't think it was my turn. Yeah, I just wanted to say that everything that I've heard so far, there's nothing more that I can add. It's, it, it is a dangerous idea for our children. I am a Bethel resident. And we are very much for the, the natural grass and are very protective of our park and we're not real, well, maybe not all of us, but many of us are very upset about having a sports park there anyway. And if we have the artificial turf that is basically spoiling the, the park for the children and for the animals, we're just very upset about that. So please consider making sure that there is just the natural grass. And thank you very much for your time.
Is there anybody else online who would like to give comment? We do have one in-person member, Jennifer, do you like this?
Yeah, I won't reiterate anything that's already been said. My name's Jennifer. I'm from Beyond Toxics. I submitted some comments by email, but I would just call your attention to the issue of PFAS and PFAS chemicals used in the manufacture of artificial turf. Oregon DEQ has, has initiated a rulemaking yesterday regarding reclassification of our adoption of rules to align the circler list with PFAS and PFOS as hazardous materials. So that is the first time that the circler hazardous material list has been updated in over forty years. And Oregon Health Authority has already moved to ban PFAS and PFOS materials in children's products and personal care products. So a more widespread ban is likely in the future. And the artificial turf manufacturers that are claiming that their product is PFAS-free is still often using PFAS in the manufacturing process, so there's secondary transfers of those materials onto the turf. So I would just like to point that out for consideration. And then the only other thing I had is that we were informed that Paramatrix would leave the triple bottom line analysis. So we do have some concerns that Cameron McCarthy might be taking a slightly biased approach towards the TBL because they are the contracted designers who work with the turf industry. So we just urge transparency around the publication of that report. Thank you.
All right. Is that good? Again? Wait, I will.
Well, we also received, the commission received some letters today, so Danielle was gonna spend a little time just summarizing those letters, speaking.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So we got a letters, we got letters from a few people who already spoke, so I won't read those. But we received a letter from Lynn Woodrich, from Zach Mulholland, and from Jennifer Isely. Jennifer, can you confirm that, are you Jennifer Isely, who just spoke in public comment?
Yes.
Or at a different Jennifer? Okay, okay. So I'm not gonna reread those, but we did receive letters from them. We also got a letter from Lisa Arkin, and I will quickly summarize that. So she is submitting research articles from independent sources on the impact of artificial turf on the environment and human health. She shared that in twenty eighteen, there was a hundred million pounds of plastic and tire waste that entered the air merely from the disposal of synthetic turf. Artificial turf has been shown to increase ground surface temperatures and thus aggravating climate change. There's a major concern of the proliferation of microplastics and harmful chemicals that leach from artificial turf that once these are in the environment, they do not biodegrade. They accumulate in animals, in the water, in food consumed by humans and wildlife. The release of microplastics and its breakdown of byproducts such as PFAS is also a large concern. And she urges the Sustainability Commission to consider the lifecycle costs as well and has some concerns as well about the triple bottom line analysis process as it has been presented, as it seems to have been created by the Cameron McCarthy Company, which she believes is a conflict of interest. So she urges the commission to seek expert guidance from environmental health researchers and others who study artificial turf but are not involved in the manufacture, sale, and disposal of it. There's also a letter from Diane Wolke. She is representing, she is submitting comment on behalf of Safe Healthy Playing Fields, Inc., which is an all-volunteer nonprofit committed to educating communities, policymakers, and elected officials about the health, safety, and financial realities of plastic fields. She shared information that synthetic turf is not a sustainable product, according to the United Nations, UCLA, and Rutgers University. Artificial turf is not recyclable. Synthetic turf is a petrochemical plastic product that presents a range of concerns, including PFAS. And shares a lot of the risks of PFAS and putting PFAS back into the world. And this is a long letter. Yeah. That's about it. But so yeah, that's all of the messages that were received online. All right. Did we want to have, any counselors want to make any comments? Based on public comment? Laura?
I just wanted to thank everyone online and in person for coming and sharing. This is a really important issue and it's going to impact people in the community for a long, long time because it, so I'm glad, I know we're talking more about it later, so I'm not gonna say more than that, but just thank you for all of your work and attention to the issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. Basically the same thing. Thanks for all the, obviously, very, well, research and educated input, and I appreciate a lot of people care about that issue. So we look forward to hearing more and talking about it more.
Counselor Simple?
Thank you to everyone who came to, to speak. This is what the Sustainability Commission is about, is connection with the community. And that goes both ways. So thank you for bringing insights and care to our attention. It means a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. All right, great. Thank you very much. And thank, I want to thank, as the chair, everyone who, who put some effort and time into this and came to talk to us, for sure. Ian, there's a, there's an item number three. It's work plan discussion. Ian was gonna say a few words, I think, and then.
Yeah, so Rich Horry, the Public Works Director, wanted to show up tonight and talk. He's got a conflict that he reported this evening, so he's going to, he's there instead. I think he just wanted to follow up on the work session that Devin and Meacher did such a great job at last month and some of the comments that came up from a couple of council members. Just to kind of clarify, kind of, you know, they had a meeting recently with a couple of members of councils, the councils like, just to follow up on some of his comments that he gave about the work plan. And I think we're able to clarify a couple of points of confusion that were maybe there in terms of what the work commission is, what the work plan was representing, you know, I think there's some confusion that it was maybe staff as opposed to the commission's work plan. And so I think some of the comments were born out of that. And I think he does understand that a big goal of this commission is to trying to align with the cap, align with where a lot of the city is in terms of things that are coming in front of council. So sort of understood that. And I think the thing he encouraged, and I think this isn't coming upon staff to do this moving forward, is to find ways to figure out how there's continuation from year to year. And I think we've tried to do that a little bit. I think we maybe need to tell that story a little bit more effectively for council moving forward, but to focus on how things are being done sort of there. But I think a lot of the comments that were said publicly, I don't think necessarily reflect kind of the thinking of council. And I think it was maybe done out of a place of wanting to do things and wanting to make sure that we're showing progress. And I think helping to understand the commission's role in everything that the city is trying to do and trying to move some of these kind of goals forward.
I have one comment that I would like to make.
Okay.
Based on my personal experience at that particular meeting and wanted to assure some, some of the, one of the messages that I was hearing the commission was, was that there's an individual's counselor's concerns from last year that were specific to that person were not being addressed in a timely fashion or by the commission perhaps at all. And I just wanted to point out that the commission does not represent one person and what they think is important or one commissioner, what they think is important. We represent the whole community. And that's why we come from all different places and give our input, so we can't just focus on what one person on city council thinks is what we could be doing specifically. So I just felt pretty strongly about that at the time and didn't say anything, which was probably smart, but I'm saying it now. So there you go. Counselor Simple?
Um, that was certainly an awkward position after we worked so hard and we all, you know, agreed and presented it. And for Counselor Zalink and then to bring up his personal requests from a year ago, which I don't know if they were, you know, how included they were with our work plan then. I'm sorry, but I thought it was really disrespectful. And I was really uncomfortable with his vote. He could have expressed his disappointment without his displeasure. So I want to make it clear that that obviously was not council majority's opinion. And you are appreciated. And I will say again, I have seen a great amount of advancement in the commission's work. And I think the counselors must notice that also. So one person, we all have opinions. And we're all able to take in what we think is important. So please do that.
Thank you. Did anyone not, did anyone watch it? I'm just curious if the people we're talking about. But yeah, now you're gonna watch it.
No, I just wanna, you know, let staff know, maybe we can get some help. It's hard to find archived stuff. If you don't do it right after that meeting, then it doesn't appear in archives again for months. So I found it hard to get recent meetings unless you get it right after the meeting. So just passing on and I'll do some work trying to figure out how do I get those recorded council meetings and council work sessions? Because if you get them in the first week or so after they're there, if you go to the archives, there seems to be a gap. Before things.
For council meetings or sustainability?
No, I was looking at both. I was looking both.
I'm happy to help you right after this with how to get to council.
Man.
I'm not sure where we're boasting sustainability.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I did the search.
All of it.
Yet the search is not always great. So if there are specific dates, sometimes it's helpful to know the dates because sometimes the search doesn't always show up. It depends on how the minutes and the transcript are actually created.
Right.
Got it. Okay. And I just wanted to follow up. I just wanted to say, from my perspective as, as the program manager, I was just, I, I thought that Devin and Meacher and Danielle handled that situation flawlessly and with grace and with intentionality and with information. I thought, you know, you all did a fantastic job of handling the, the situation in the moment.
I want to totally echo that. You really did have presence and you did not get riled up, which I can't say that I would. Really admirable and very grateful. It just emphasized the reasonableness and dedication of the whole rest of the work.
Well, I think Danielle gets the, the big prize for that one. You held it together so well and you just kept going. It was great. It was great to see.
Very professional. Thanks for representing us all very well. Yeah, I watched and you did a great job.
It was easier being on Zoom.
Yeah.
I was doing things under the table. All right. So thank you very much. That and we're only a little bit, five minutes behind, so that's good. So now we are going to have a presentation about the long-awaited Golden Gardens Park Master Plan.
Do you want us up at that? Do you want to sit here or do you want to sit at the?
I think at the, at the head would be.
I don't know which, which part of the crowd we're trying to serve right now, but.
I think you'll serve everyone if you sit down there.
That's great.
No advanced slides for me?
I will.
Hi, everyone. My name is Karen America, and I'm the Parks and Natural Resource Planning Manager for the city of Eugene. And I'm gonna start just by introducing our consultant, Josh Crowfoot, with Parametrics. And um, I'm gonna start just by introducing our consultant Josh output with parametrics. Um, we also have um Kelsey's lever on. Somewhere back in there um virtually, um and she's going to Cameron McCarthy. And then Mark Cosmos, who is the project manager for the Golden Gardens um project is also in the room. Um, so we're all really um pleased to be here tonight to be picking up this conversation with you. Also really appreciative of the input, both in person and that we receive, we received copies of all of the um. Written input and we've made sure that our consultant has all that information cuz there is a lot of. Links to research and um information that we wanna make sure we all have, so I just wanna assure everybody that we have that.
We have it.
Yep, um, so um. Yeah, our our goal really for this meeting. Um, is to um talk through the criteria that we'll be using. In the triple bottom line analysis um that we are looking at in order to make a good, informed. Thoughtful decision about field surfacing um for this proposed sports fields at Golden Gardens Park. And um. Uh, so parametrics will be our consultant on that project. Um, but uh, in your packet, you also did have a uh. Report that was um done by Cameron McCarthy. And Kelsey is going to just provide a little bit of information to frame kind of what that report is. Um, it's kind of a considerations report. It is not the final TBL analysis. Um, and they won't be doing that. Cameron McCarthy might be doing the that um version of the work. That will be parametrics, just to kind of clear that up. Um, and then Josh will walk us through what that um methodology will look like for the analysis and then we'll. Be asking you for um your input. Um, we anticipate coming back to you again when we have a draft analysis and reviewing that with you at a later date. So um, to get us started, I was thought that I would um just give you some brief context information about. The project in general, so um. You could go to the next slide for those of you unfamiliar with where Golden Gardens is. It is a um. Two hundred and twenty-three acre park in northwest Eugene in the Bethel neighborhood. Uh, it it sits immediately west of Jerry's. Um, and uh, you can access it, well, not currently, but there is. A future access for vehicles off of Clear Lake Road. Um, whereas today, most of the access to the park comes from the south through the neighborhoods. Next slide, and I'm gonna kind of fly through this because obviously we've learned to get to the turf issue. Um, so uh, we are looking at including three elements within this park. Uh, sports complex, natural area and neighborhood park. And through our community engagement, we have been talking about finding the right balance of developed. Park assets with our natural areas and finding the right balance of uh immediate neighborhood considerations. With uh broader needs in the community around recreation and economic development. Next. Um, a few more words about the sports complex, just cuz not everybody kind of understands why. That's necessary, um, but we have actually known for um. More than one, likely two decades that we have a shortage of sports fields in the community. Um, and that's a problem because uh participating in sports is one way to have a healthy, active community. And in particular, um, for kids, we know that kids that play sports. Have an increased chance of growing up healthy, uh feeling good about themselves, of developing friendships. Developing skills like teamwork, like respect. Um, they're more likely to succeed in school and in future careers. And so that's something, an opportunity we want um our kids to have access to. And our kids in in Bethel in particular to have access to uh those opportunities. Um, and so um, we wanted to understand what that. Sportsfield gap is in our community a little bit more, so back in twenty sixteen. We commissioned a market study to more closely look at the need for sports fields and it was confirmed. That indeed, uh, we have a lack, given given everything, the size of our community and the. Um, the number of sports groups that we definitely do have a lack of fields. And that that is exacerbating over time as we are a growing community. Um, and we still have not met that shortage or addressed that shortage. It also showed that there are uh economic benefits that can occur because we are looking at. Designing this in a way to support regional um tournaments. Um, that uh the the uh revenue from those tournaments. Can go to um offsetting our maintenance and operations of the facility. And then there are broader economic benefits, um, because people are coming into our community from outside and they're spending dollars on. Um, hotels and restaurants and uh frankly, the types of services. That we are really trying to encourage in the Bethel neighborhood. And that will create a better uh market demand for those types of services. And finally, the location, the reason why we're looking at Golden Gardens Park for this is um, it is the only property that we. That the city owns that could accommodate such a facility due to its size. It's a really large. Piece of property, two hundred and twenty-three acres, it's the um. Uh, as far as developed parks, it's second only to Alton Baker Park in Eugene. Um, it's flat, it has great access um via highways. Um, it is inside the urban growth boundary, so it is planned for urban development. And currently about a hundred and fifty acres of the park are sitting as fallow farmland. And we know that that's not gonna stay that way into the future. Um, so here's a timeline of, that I'm actually not gonna cover a lot of that, but what I think is important to note is that in twenty eighteen. Uh, Eugene voters did pass a bond measure for parks and recreation. Uh, to improve uh parks and facilities throughout Eugene. And uh phase one of a sports complex was one of the listed projects on that bond measure. Which is why we are talking about this now. We have about four point nine million dollar budget to do all the planning. And um, a small portion of the project of a small phase one. Um, and so we have been engaging the community to develop the concept plan. And by concept plan, what we're really trying to figure out there is. What are the uses that are gonna occur on this property and in what general locations? Um, but there will be more work to do once we get through the concept plan, if you could advance. This is kind of looking forward once we have that concept plan, which we're close. Um, actually, the triple bottom line turf analysis, that's that's where we are today. We are kicking this discussion off today. Um, that analysis will inform our choice of sports field surfacing. There will be other um, many other things to do too. There'll be a lot of permitting required for this project um from local. Uh, land use to um transportation impact analyses to environmental permitting. At the local, state and federal level, it was mentioned before that the Western Palm Turtle. Will likely be listed as a threatened species uh within the year. We're expecting that and that will. Come with an entire new layer of regulation um under the Endangered Species Act. And we are thrilled to comply with that because it is our goal also to preserve that species. We have um made. A lot of investments to um to improve the habitat there. And so the point there is that concept plan could change. So the concept plan that we're working on right now is the best plan we have, given the information that we have. But as we go through that permitting process, there could be new requirements that will change that design. Um, and then and then eventually we would get towards phase one design and um. Construction potentially beginning in twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight. So next slide, now I'm just gonna give you a quick kind of tour of the concept plan. Um, this is a bird's eye view looking at the um park from the south looking north. You can see highway ninety-nine diagonal in the upper right hand corner. Um, uh, and um, what I guess what I wanna point out on this slide is that you can see that. We really tried to push all the developed. Uh, more high intensity uses within the park, kind of to the edges of the park. To create that large central uh natural area in uh around the ponds in the center. In order to um protect the habitat values we currently have there and just to build on the natural area. Uh, there are um setbacks um along the edges of the property where we have but residential neighborhoods. And and those are all complied with as well, but um just kind of wanted to give you that general overview with this slide.
That's a clarifying question. Some of the information we got today or for earlier from Beyond Toxic said that there was only three hundred and twenty feet. Between development and the pond turtle, is that?
That would be the distance between the um, the the pinwheel baseball complex on the right hand side of the screen. That's three hundred and twenty feet to the edge of the ponds there. Um, the buffer on the, from the ponds to the um soccer fields is a thousand feet.
And five hundred feet is the recommended minimum for.
It's a rec, it's a kind of qualified recommendation, yes. Um, next slide. So, and I'll I'll try to touch on that a little bit more, but um, just to give you a. Kind of tour of the site, um, uh, starting up at the yellow star, that is the entrance. Um, that will, the vehicle entrance that will be created off of Clear Lake Road. Um, so there'll be a park entry drive that comes in, um, I might just actually stand up and make some things out. Um. Uh, right here, we have a sport court complex, which would be um tennis and pickleball. Basketball and sand volleyball. Um. Over on the east side, we have a eight field softball, baseball complex. That um can accommodate both baseball and softball and of all ages and and skill levels, so there's um adjustable. Fence lines to just make sure that we're getting as much use out of these fields as we can. In um the southeast corner is the neighborhood park, and this is meant to serve the immediate neighbors. This is an underserved uh neighborhood as far as uh parks go. And so that um neighborhood park, like all of our neighborhood parks would have a small playground and some um. Picnic facilities, um pathways, benches. Um, uh, some irrigated lawn for kind of informal play, and then fairly large um natural area and trail system. Um, there would be some proposed um stream bank restoration similar to what we've done in this area. And then over on the west side would be the um six field sport soccer complex, which can also accommodate. All the other sports that are played on a rectangle field like ultimate and um football and lacrosse. Um, and both the soccer and the softball field complex also have a lot of um kind of ancillary. Facilities like restrooms, um concessions, um a maintenance building. There is parking for each one of the uh the three sports components there that includes paved parking. As well as grass overflow. Um, and all these fields are proposed to be lighted as well. Um. And then in the center is the natural area, um. Uh, today, if you go out there, you're walking along a path that really is tight around all sides of the ponds. It's about forty acres in size. And this would uh be uh expanded to a hundred and sixty-eight acres. We would be transforming the. The um, the farm farm fields, the fallow farm fields into these natural areas. And um, expanding the walking path um to be uh eighteen hundred meter loop. And can you go to the next? This is just a perspective um of the natural area. If you look in the upper right hand corner, there's a red arrow that shows you kind of the direction. So we're standing, we're looking north towards the, or we're standing north, looking to the southeast, back towards the neighborhood. And um, what this shows is that there would be a twenty-six acre restricted area where. Um, humans and dogs would not be allowed. Um, we know that along this western edge of the ponds is the most sensitive habitat for the pond turtles. Because that's where the majority of them are nesting. And we know that turtles are very sensitive to movement. And so that trail going right alongside the west uh edge of the ponds is really disruptive to the turtles. And so we are proposing to move that away and to create this restricted area. Um, and within that, we'll also have some bermings, so some kind of mounds um and topography. To create an additional barrier as well as vegetation. And again, that just helps um interrupt the visual access between the turtles and movement, the more um. More intensified uses on the on the site. Um. Let's see. I think, um. Next slide. So uh, this is just to give you a sense of what phase one might look like. Um, we uh aren't committing to this scope of work yet. Cuz we haven't done a detailed cost estimate yet, but our thinking to date. Is that we would certainly need to get people to the site, and so we would be building the um park access road coming in off of Clear Lake. We'll probably need to do some intersection improvements there at Clear Lake. Um, and really focusing on the western half of the site. We don't know how many fields we would have the budget for. Maybe it's one, maybe it's three. We would build the required parking to support that. Um, and then um, we do anticipate that we would be making the habitat improvements first thing. Because we don't wanna intensify the uses on the site without doing that mitigation work, so. Relocating the trail and making those habitat improvements would all be in phase one as well. Um, I think that's about it. Next slide. Yeah, there we go. Um, so. Yeah, I, at this point, if Kelsey is um. Is she, was she ever brought up? Okay, so um, Kelsey's lover with Cameron McCarthy is with us originally here and. Um, she was, we were gonna kick off kind of our discussion about field surfacing with. Kelsey telling us a little bit about the report um that uh Cameron McCarthy uh uh did and was in your packet. And it's really about considerations, but I want want her to frame that. And then we'll move um on to Josh to talk about the analysis, so. Kelsey?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, awesome. Hi, everybody. Um, there's a few familiar people I see online as well. I actually used to chair this commission. Um, a number of years back in twenty nineteen, so it's nice to be back and I'm, yeah, representing Cameron McCarthy in this meeting. Um, and I just have kind of to the point, I'm gonna just quickly kind of set a context so we can really get into the discussion, but. Just some big overarching things I wanted to mention. So as noted, um Cameron McCarthy completed this research comparing synthetic turf and natural turf. To ultimately support the city in making a product decision for a sports field, so. The study does not advise an outcome, um but rather it really captures the trade-offs that need to be considered in order to choose an outcome. So we are not claiming a right or wrong choice, just different combinations of trade-offs. And the goal really is to make an informed choice and communicate why that choice was made. Um, so we are a paid consultant, but we do not financially benefit. From whatever material is chosen and we do not have a stake in that outcome. Um, I heard that kind of come up a few times and. Um, again, ultimately, this is really a deeply nuanced discussion and different factors can change which option. Um, synthetic or natural is the most sustainable, so parametrics will help everyone consider which option may serve the greatest public interest from that perspective. But a few kind of keynotes, just some like the actual research from our end, which um the first being. That the EU regulates synthetic turf way more heavily than in the United States, so we endeavor to really focus on international resources in our work. Um, because they have a lot more stringent standards, standards outside the United States. And in addition to that, um, we reviewed approximately a five-year window of the most recent uh peer-reviewed academic publications. On synthetic turf and natural grass, um both specific to sports fields, and so we don't want um what's in front of you to be confused. With like an exhaustive literature review. Uh, this analysis goal is um really just to provide an initial look at the most. Uh this analysis goal is um really just to provide an initial look at the most current thinking. About social, environmental and economic impacts of these playing surfaces among um those who are independently researching it. And another thing that we uh found that came up when doing this research that feels important to note is that use and playability are obviously important for sports fields. And so we can think of playability or the number of hours of play on a given field per year, like how we think about efficiency. So the number of hours a year we expect a field can support based on maintenance such as watering, fertilizer, replacement, et cetera. Can impact is overall sustainability, which is where uh measuring and comparing some of these things can get a little tricky. But um also, I want to note that although the research focuses mostly on recycled tire rubber infill turf systems. Um this project is looking at alternative infill material that does not use rubber or plastic infill. So turf products on the market today, um including turf fibers, allow the project to potentially use materials tested for. And free of PFAs. So should the city go that go the route of synthetic turf? And again, that totally remains to be seen. Um we just want to note the materials are evolving. And we would obviously, of course, advise the city to consider those alternatives to crumb rubber infill for all the reasons everyone named. Um as well as consider other advancements in cooling and um PFAS free manufacturing. And then the last thing is just for comparison purposes, the natural grass sports surface is considered to be a sand based field. That achieves a higher performance level than grassy fields found in a park setting. So the higher performance grass fields allow for a better comparison to the performance of the typical synthetic turf sports field. Studied in the literature, which ultimately is why some online articles, uh manufacturers' information and op eds were not considered in our analysis. So that's just kind of a again, an overview of of what's in front of you and and what we were thinking about and working on from our end. But um I'll now pass it off to Josh and then I'm I'm just here in the background kind of taking some notes and um here for questions. And again, if there's anything I don't have the answer to or can't provide tonight, I'm happy to make a note of it and get back to you all. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kelsey. Um hi, everybody. I'm Josh Crawford. Um I used to work for a firm called Good Company that I co-founded with Josh Scove. And another uh friend of a while back. Um we have since joined Parametrics, an employee owned firm that does environmental science, planning and engineering. And I run the climate and sustainability group. So uh that's where I'm coming from. I'm also on the Oregon Sustainability Board. Uh and play a similar role to you folks for the state government. And so uh so let me tell you a bit about what I see here. I see the beginning of a comparative analysis. And I think the alternatives as we know them now are the sand based playing field. The crumb rubber, maybe with substitutes, and then maybe a another synthetic field option. So what we try and do in all these activities is lay everything side by side. So imagine the column headings of the three different uh turf types. And then all the things we care about are the rows. And in that table, we try and find information about that row or that turf type and put it in the square. And the the goal is to make it as close to apples to apples comparison as we can possibly get, or grapes to grapes or. Other other foods. So the um so framing that is probably the most important thing. What matters to folks, right? That's a big piece of it. I whenever possible, if we can quantify, we will quantify. So that we can get a numeric comparator. That doesn't always happen. Sometimes the best you can find is just uh is a good description. Uh and why that's concerning in some things is sometimes something sounds huge and scary, but it might be tiny. But there's no measurement on it, so people could be very concerned or very happy and there's no scale to it. So in everything we do, we try and put scale to it where possible. Sometimes we can't do that. And we do lit research. We got great stuff already submitted to the commission through the letters, the ones that uh Carolyn was acknowledging just a little bit. All of that information is now in our hands. Uh that is stuff, but that'll be our starting point where once we build the frame with you folks. We'll start populating it as much as we can with the studies that are already there. And we will reread those studies and make sure that whatever we're exerting from that and putting it into the table. It's representative of that issue. And as we gather, there needs to be some boundaries on how far you look. And that is one of the questions. This study doesn't have infinite scope. We don't know how far we're how deep we'll go. What we do is we take it a certain way. But the number one critique of all of our work, including greenhouse gas inventories, is you didn't look close enough. But at some point, there's no infinite budget to keep looking at everything as far as you want. So I just want to announce that. That is a common feature of studies like this. Then, once we get all that stuff together for the math part. We try and normalize that so it is apples to apples. And from what I'm hearing so far, it sounds like there's two big numbers that matter. The life of the facility before you remake it. So whatever that is, fifteen, twenty years, and imagine one of these turf types lasts fifteen years, the other one lasts twenty. Well, that twenty-one and the fifteen one, if they had the same impacts, but one doesn't last as long. Then the twenty year one looks better, right? Because it's more durable for the same goods or bads. The other unit that sounds like it's emerging as an important unit to compare things is hours of use. Right? How many people get to enjoy the upside of this turf? Meaning, how many people are recreating on this turf? Right? So if one solution is one third of the number of people. And the other one is three times, three times is going to look better, period, right? Because if you have the same concern or the same opportunity spread over fewer people or more people. It gives you very different answers. And that's about that. That's kind of like that life cycle, right? How many people are you serving? Think of a bus. Right? A bus driving empty down a corridor, nothing but problems. If it's full, it's a magnificent benefit to the community. So comparing that by numbers of people that can use it or hours is a very important unit.
Can I ask a quick thing about that? So I wondered, do you like like take out like Christmas, like the two weeks around Christmas where nobody's using a sports field anyway? Like, is that already like, or is that?
We would dig that up. So how much programming can this receive, right? What's realistic? Uh either historically or based on the facility type. Um having raised kids that did sports, I remember going to, I mean, it's basketball. But going to basketball tournaments every single weekend all over the place.
Because the sports have a cycle. So in the.
There is a cycle.
So if you are you like putting all that, so you're not being like, oh, no one can play on grass in December thirty first, but no one is gonna.
Absolutely, absolutely. You gotta look at seasons. You gotta count out those uses and make sure that that's a fair representation of use. Um probably no middle of the night games, although off off time is a real thing in parks.
Not my question, but I have done some flag football in December. While it's snowing at night. It's miserable, but we love our children. My question was it uh kind of buried in this and we'll probably get to it. You do actually, it it does note an eight to ten year life on turf. And so you just said fifteen to twenty.
Hypothetical.
So the eight to ten was.
We'll get whatever the warranty is. You did when it's a product, it's usually a warranty that we default to. On and if it's on something that's built and maintained and it could be anything. We'll go to the maintenance records and say realistically, how long do you hold these things before you have to rebuild them? So this is the other thing, is we try and get actual data. From real life experience first and foremost. Some things may or may not fit from the literature. For example, if you were studying use of turf in a all dry climate. Right? That's moderate temperatures. It would be a very different study than in the Pacific Northwest.
Uh yeah, I was just curious, it's kind of back to a similar thing that you were asking about, Lauren. It's like, so so the two things seem like they're directly related, the how long it lasts and how many people, how many hours it's being used, right? So that's factored in as well, like if natural turf isn't being used as much, does it? I'm just, I don't know which one is gonna last longer. I'm just saying, does that mean it lasts longer, but it's not being used as much? Or you know, the they just seem linked. Is that?
If they if they had the same ability to be used the exact same number of times inside of a year, they'd be equal. And if the life cycles were the same before they needed to be replaced, they'd be equal on a perfect basis. But they probably aren't. Probably the life cycles are different and probably in wet seasons, you're more likely to be on an artificial turf. And have more people use it than in uh you know, a dry season. So that is part of it. I don't know the actual use data. We have to dig that up. Okay, any questions on kind of that opening frame? Okay, so we're putting, we're making this big table. But we're trying to be as rigorous as we possibly can be with all the other research that we can find. And normalize the math where it's possible and describe it where well where it's not. On inevitably, when you start seeing things row by row, line by line, column by column. You start saying, oh, that one sticks out. That looks really bad. Or, oh, that one looks really great. And sometimes when you look at the bad one, there's actually a simple solution for it. So that's something that we almost always have to do is a draft version. And people say, oh, that's unacceptable. But is there anything to be done about it, right? So that is, there'll be some epiphanies that come through this. We've never done a study like this ever where we weren't surprised. Something surprises surprises us, no matter how many we do. There's always a surprise inside. So there might be something, I'm gonna make something up. This is not real. I'm making it up as hypothetical. Okay, let's say um uh you had that trail right up against the western side. And we do the research and it says, actually, no, that is the bank that must be protected for the habitat. Right? And we go through it and we compare it and it makes that one look terrible. But then you say, well, we could move the move the path and we could put barriers to use there. And then all of a sudden, that habitat's protected. Okay, that's when one of the kinds of things that comes out, right? You see what's bad. You say, can we fix that with good design? Can we fix that with thinking? That's what we usually look for. And some of those things are really solvable and some of them, there are just nothing to do about it. And we have to see what comes up. So that is typical for process. I think we ought to dive in and start showing you some of these rows and say, are these rows enough? Do you have ideas for things that you want looked at? And let's try not to get into the exhaustive discussion yet because we're just trying to say what matters. So if we go into this and you say, this is what matters. Please a short statement of why you think it matters. But I don't think we have time to discuss it in every turf type, in every permutation. But just getting the list for us so we can start building the table is huge. And that's the thing that group or crowdsourcing it always makes it better and more thorough. But again, there is a limit to every we to our study, right? I I don't think we're gonna be here in four years still working on it.
Did I hear Kelsey say that crumb rubber is off the table, the one that's banned in the EU that's the or did she say that was off the table?
Well, I we wanna look at it, but we we think that there we have heard that there are alternatives. And we definitely want to use alternatives.
Because it's being phased out of the holes, like it's banned. Yeah, yeah.
Well, and that this is the other thing is, and I'm speaking from ignorance here, having not been a turf expert. But there's different types of crumb rubber, right? There's some made from shoes, some made from tires. Those things are pretty different in terms of composition. So what whatever we can see that are alternatives to the thing that we know people are are concerned about, we're gonna look at it. Um but it might be one of those things where it like, well, this is clear. There's a problem here. Now what can we do about it? And then we go find out there's if there's something else or if it's a design choice, right? Uh there's so many things in a park that can change before it's built. Okay, on traditional framework, social, environmental, financial or economic.
Oh, that's really readable.
Oh, no. Okay. Make it too big. Thank you. So these considerations, I would, I would say, these are the things that were already listed in the Cameron McCarthy. Um McCarthy Gilbert Report. On. We would have three columns over there, the three alternatives or the turf types. And it under the social category, we try and look for what's the good and what's the bad, right? In everything, there's some gray in there, of course. But like, what are the things that we we know are the good things that are the value side of this? Why is this good for everybody? And then what are our concerns? So why don't we start with the um good? And this might be most of it, or this might be horribly inadequate for you folks. So when you think of the goods of this park, what are the things that you want us to try and measure?
From the social, social.
From the social angle.
Did we get this before?
It's in your packet, yeah.
It's at it's at the very end of the.
The other report.
Sorry.
Commissioners were emailed this presentation and it should.
It's in both, it's in both things. It's in the packet and it's in the slide thing. No, it's all right. It's kind of way at the very end of the packet. Yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to understand this layout first a little bit.
Okay.
Aspect, subaspect.
Okay, yes, okay. So so let let me uh let me start and kind of describe this framework, right? We have three choices. And those imagine are the column headings, right? And then the rows are the goods and bads we want to look at. And there's a clump of social ones, plus and minus. There's a clump of environmental plus and minus. And a clump of economics, goods and bads. This category, aspect, subaspect, deep subaspect is really category is social. Aspect would be recreational opportunities, right?
Okay.
Do we want to break that out and say, natural area recreational opportunities? Us rectangle sports. Field sports that are baseball, softball equivalent, right? Do we do we want to break out recreational use in that way? I think we do for the fields.
So these next two ones in the baseball, softball, I mean, it's the soccer rectangle. Those are subs of recreational opportunities. Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
That's right. And you're seeing a screenshot of a gigantic spreadsheet. That will be this huge table, right? Where we'll we'll collect it and we'll probably have another sheet that'll just be social aspects. And we might even have one for all of these uh subaspects, right? So I put in here recreational. Now notice, I've got emotional benefit and health benefit, right? Why do you recreate? Make yourself feel better and to maybe make your body better, healthier, right? So the question is, is there more to it than that? Just on those? Or do you want to keep asking questions just to understand?
Um so are we, are we supposed to be giving you like what we want currently under like social?
Sure, yes, please.
Is is something there? Would that be like? The number of like underserved youth that then would be able to participate as compared to if you didn't have. The number of like, underserved youth that then would be able to participate as compared to if you didn't have these fields?
Uh, uh, to me, that would, in the social aspects, usually equity and social justice are common features. So the fact that we heard that there isn't a regional park, or a neighborhood park out there, and that there's a disparity. For park use, I think that, that is warranted, so. So, uh, so. Equitable access to recreation?
Yeah, it works for me, I mean, I just know from my experience, it did. And you talked about, you know, being a dad, and I got to drive to volleyball places every weekend for six years, or club volleyball, and it's. It's a, it. Not, children don't have the same opportunities, and, and that's part of the difficulty, if we have a shortage of fields and playing surfaces. It's actually the kids that we could argue need that the most for social, physical, mental health reasons, but then have the least access or no access.
Nope, sorry. Go ahead.
Um, I, I think I gotta think of it, it's like experience of play. So, um, if there's a way to quantify what an athlete, a youth might feel as far as their experience. Having access to a best-in-class facility. Um, especially if they are. Comparing themselves to somebody of a different. Affluence level or um, facility accessible, so. You know, how do we make sure that doesn't matter what incoming bracket they're walking out of the house with, that they feel like they still have the best. Experience of play.
And, and. Don't feel constrained by what's up there. This was just to prompt in case people felt stuck. If you see something that you would say is about culture. Or about people. Uh, feel free to share it, I did notice, for example. Uh. The, um, the mention of, um. At the importance of soccer. In Latino culture. Like, to me, that was a good flag. Like, hey, do, are we, is this? Who are we trying to serve in this park? Right? But that's just soccer, right, it's not football, it's not ultimate, it's not lacrosse. But, so that is one of those things that we would wanna consider.
So we've got hours of play. Capability, hours of use. Um. It seems like there might also be some way to. Quantify or estimate quality of those hours, for example. Really hot turf is probably a low-quality hour, really muddy turf is probably also a low-quality hour. Uh, so there's. There's hours and there's hours.
Yeah. Great. And again, that might be a, a mitigation thing, right, imagine. This is all a hypothetical. But imagine very tall, fast-growing, water-loving trees along the western border. That kept the hot afternoon sun from being in a crisis, right? Uh. Shade is ever more important in all human environments, so. Um, but. Point well taken. Other, other things related to just the people part in their experience?
Uh, and I think that we have to look at that, you know. Social experience. That also has a very positive environmental impact in a part of the community that has a low tree inventory. I just realized, I'm the guy across the street at twenty-nine eighty-one, just across the road from there. Where Josh and I live, in near Hendrix Park, there's lots of trees, we know there's a low tree inventory. So there's a bonus factor here of shade having cooling and increasing the inventory of trees. In an underserved part of town.
Thank you for the mental, Josh. Yeah, and I, I have seen heaps of data on mental health and green space. Right? Just even grass growing in an empty lot in a, a completely destroyed. You know, urban envi- environment, the people that can see that grass are happier significantly than the people that can, so. Heard. Any other? Thoughts on this, on the experience of it, otherwise we could move to environmental.
Well, but we, what about safety and health?
Uh, yeah, actually, that, that's great, that's great.
There's a lot there where. Through the next lines down from here.
Yeah.
Quickly, and they're all, I think, very, very important. And I don't know that I would add necessarily to any of those, but I, it's been very, very important that they're all, the chemical exposure. Metals, the PFAS, microplastics. The whole injury thing is so interesting to me, cause it's so, it seems like there's some disagreement about that. Um, or that's changed over time, or we've just heard different things, not adventures. Like he, all those things I think are.
So. Hit, yeah, could you, okay, sorry, this is the end of the page, started the page thing. But here are some of the other ones that. I saw reference. In the Cameron McCarthy, um, report. And, um, it was referenced, but. Data, I don't think data was found on it. So these are the things that were mentioned in some of the reports that were cited. But I don't think this is exhaustive. Uh, I just. Pulled out the things that were already there.
Just point up on the injury, if. I don't know the information, they'll, I think. Be interesting, the, the injury concern or statistics. Related to the primary age groups or age band that would be using it. Because. Yes, professional athletes would much rather play on the natural turf. But I also think their. Uh, how their bodies adapt to the surface is different than the six-year-old, the ten-year-old, the twelve-year-old.
And I'm guessing that. An NFL team is a little better resourced. Just to guess.
See, see the stadium at Phoenix, Arizona, where they roll in the new field, yeah. A little bit.
A- anybody have other ones on that?
The. Report that was mentioned about cooling, there was a rainwater study. And actually, I do science journalism, and I covered that story, so I interviewed both two of the, um, authors of the study, as well as a. Environmental toxicologist is like an outside person. Um, and that, you know, in their study, this is in the Netherlands, like their conventional turf reached a hundred and forty-four degrees Fahrenheit. And their rainwater cooled turf. Was nearly the same as the, uh, natural grass. Um, and it was mentioned as like potential mitigation, but there had, there's zero fields in the US. Of that, it's like very, very new, so just. Though it exists, I don't know if it's. Um, possible to. Get in here yet, but, um, I just wanted to say that, and the environmental toxicologist I interviewed, he's at the Yale School of Public Health, and he's. Very against turf for the exposure to the children, for the. The toxicology issues, and he said he talks to cities and communities considering turf, and he's happy to talk, so I. I can pass his name, he's, you know, clearly a not internist, like he's a, he's a researcher, and he's.
Origin forestry, probably.
Uh, he's the.
Their environmental.
Yale School of Public Health.
Oh, public health?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I can pass on his name and.
I think he cited in that report, isn't he? I know I bumped into that somewhere in my reading for this, but yes, thank you. You wanna move us? I, I, I'm not keeping track of time, so I will.
I might as well do it now, so this was, our discussion was supposed to end at six fifty-five, according to the agenda, and we'd like to extend by fifteen minutes, this is really important. Topic and.
I know we extend by fifteen minutes.
All right, great, all in favor?
Right.
Yeah, I don't know who was online, but. I'm gonna assume they've. We should see. Lily and John, did you?
Yes.
Yeah, they're both voting to approve. Okay, thanks.
Wonderful. Okay.
So should we move to environmental?
Yeah, and this environmental gets longish. So if you can look in your packet. Um, do you all have a packet? Okay. Uh. There's two pages here.
I have a couple extra copies if anybody wants them.
So. Uh. What I'd suggest you do is walk through it, and if what you're concerned about. Is written here, then know, know it's on the list. And if it's not, or if there's a nuance that you think needs to be voiced, feel free, please. Yeah. Chair.
I have a, um, just a. Clarifying question about the discussion about stormwater and runoff. Not wanting, I'm assuming to divert that to the pond, obviously, but also maybe not wanting to divert it to a pipe system. So, did your image, that site plan, is that anticipating a separate pond, was that in that footprint, or? Uh, I guess what's the plan then for the row?
The, the plan is that there would be stormwater treatment on site for the fields, the parking lots for.
But like a separate pond or swale, or?
Likely, yeah, we, we frankly haven't designed what that treatment is yet, but that there would be treatment.
And then it would discharge to somewhere.
Yeah, and I don't know if we know that yet.
Okay, and then are, are there wells in that, is it possibly recharging, or? I know there are some active wells out, wellheads out on that area, so.
You mean, you mean for human use, or are you just saying like, are you concerned about brown water?
About, cause we're talking about the pond in the center, but the stormwater has to go somewhere, so I just was trying to imagine, is it gonna? Recharge some of those aquifers, is it gonna flow to a swale, but that still has to discharge to something, or?
Yeah.
Or it, it infiltrates, or it evaporates. Right, so, so it's really like, does that have the capacity to hold and treat? Right, and then, and then beyond that, there's a million different treatments inside of stormwater, um, treatments.
I think what I heard is, they don't know yet, correct, okay.
But, but if it's a concern of like, what would the treatment be, with stormwater? We, we can look at that.
Yeah, probably.
Okay. Because it seems like some of these might be handled with one of those facilities.
And, and I think that's universal, whether it's natural or. That's correct.
Um, I was, I'm interested in. I guess. There's, there's two things, one is whether, it's probably very small in the context of the Lehigh Valley, but one is whether there's. Any difference in impact on. Non-resident, speed animals, like there's turtles that live in the park.
The birds that fly in and.
Birds, I don't know if deer pass through, I don't know, just considering whether there's other stuff, it's a relative, like it's a drop in the bucket of the Lehigh Valley. But it is a natural area right next to the city that may have some. Some animal pressure. Um, so that's one thought, uh, if there's a, a appreciable difference. Um, and then I had an ill-formed thought about, um. E- environmental. Implications from basically extreme weather, snow, ice, heat dome, um, or is there. Significant difference in terms of how these perform in those cases, like. Is the ice gonna ruin something, or a heat dome gonna bake the grass to death? Without significant management, or just that kind of thinking, what happens as weather extremes intensify in both cases? Or in all three cases? That's kind of environmental, it's not really about the impact on the environment, it's the impact of the environment on the.
On the life cycle of the material or the facility, for sure, yeah. And that comes in also into use, right, again. Uh. You know, when it's over a certain heat, we're not gonna put our kids out in there anymore, now that we've learned those lessons, or hopefully have learned those lessons. Um. Other, would you maybe flip the page, oh, I'm sorry.
Laura and then Jan.
Um, I had to, one with high heat, you know, if you walk up to an artificial turf field in high temperatures, you can smell the chemicals coming off of it. When you're not even near, so imagine, imagine the impact to that neighborhood, if we have these heat situations, like they're going to be breathing that in. Even if they're not on the field and kids aren't playing. Uh, it just, it aerosols, like there's no way, it's plastic baking in the hot sun, so that community is gonna have that impact, which I think should be considered. Um, and then the other thing I was wondering about is looking at stormwater runoff, um, comparing the infiltration rates of, cause these are pretty big areas. Like of the different materials, and one of them might reduce the size of the stormwater. Management that needs to be constructed, so just kind of linking all those things together with the class. And there is ways to, you know, do stormwater under the fields, but I don't, I don't know. I think that's might be a little bit out of the budget, uh, but that could be. Something, I think that's probably the way of the future. Mixing them together.
Have you seen examples of that in studies that, or your research, like in?
They, this. No, but that's what the researchers that did that, the rainwater cooling the turf and infiltrating it, um, that's their next field, cause they're not really. They don't really like the idea of the kids being on the, for like toxicity reasons, so they're looking at how they can. Collect stormwater underneath a natural. Turn, so that's kind of a future direction, so.
We did it, um, like, uh. Triple bottom line screening tool for airport stormwater facility design. On, and we bumped into some weird hybrids. Of vaults. Uh, that had a big permeable. Like natural system above it, and when that got overwhelmed, it would go in the vault, and then it would. Uh, this one wasn't wiki, but it would have to re-enter a new treatment facility before it was let into the river or the ocean.
Yeah, I'm not sure where, it may all be reflected in here or where it fits, but. Would, I see below in the economic, we talk about lifecycle costs, but I'm also thinking of the life cycles. And on our impact in terms of disposal of the field.
End of life. Okay. Like. Is, does that create a problem for somebody else, or? Is it that y- you could recover that material and reduce the environmental impact from the production of it? Because you're recycling it, what, what is it you're most interested in there?
Yes.
Okay, so, so if it was going to a landfill, I mean. Is that something that you'd want documented, or is it more about the?
Environmental factor, how, how big a load of plastic that we're needing to dump every eight years or whatever it is, and. That should be included in environmental analysis.
And, and sorry, but the interest behind that is what, the truck movement and the emissions, the air toxins in the greenhouse gases? Or the volume of space consumed in our landfill that means we do not have future space for that use? Because once it's entombed. Right? I mean, what is the concern there, is it exposure? Or is it displacement?
Well, that it's never going away.
Okay.
Major, did you hook now, are you changing? Yes, on that.
Mm-hmm.
It's the materials. I think, I think. Maybe the question is. I know, I don't understand the embodied emissions, the offer, I don't, I don't understand that of this particular material.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's hard to know what part to ask for.
Yeah.
But, you know, if, if the material is made after the eighty-five percent recycled. Materials as an input to start with. I guess that would be the element, without knowing, it's not being the subject matter area. It's hard to know how to ask the question in the right way.
Yeah, yeah.
Accurately captures its footprint, if, if the majority of it is already recycled, and you're diverting from the landfill, you want to make this product. Then maybe the point is to say that you've got fifteen percent of a footprint that you just delayed and impacts waiting. But I'm making all that up, and it'd be better to not have to make it up.
No, I get it, I get it. So, so embodied emissions or embodied impacts. Are what it'll arrive to the field for, and for sure, we're gonna look at that for climate, right? Because that's one of the main concerns is embodied emissions with a fully installed facility, and then what does it take? For ongoing maintenance? And so, so, um, that's where you get into recycled content questions. And, uh, some places it matters more. Uh, some places it matters less. Um. I. Buying recycled matters a whole lot more than can this be recycled.
Right.
Because it may or may not be recycled at the end of life. So when you buy recycled, you know it happened at least once. So when you buy recycled, you know it happened at least once. But when you dispose of it, unless it's going back to be remade into something, you have no guarantee that it's going to be made into another thing. So when I was asking about displacement, imagine if, you know, everybody could. Take a tire and retread it, and it would last a lot longer. Well, you just avoided making the whole tire, you had to make the tread. But there's an avoided impact, which is about the embodied impact. So that's something we, we would expect to look at. Um, and that might be in either climate or production emissions. That's, that's where we're thinking about getting at it. But it is a hard question to ask when you don't have the language for it. That's why I was saying like, is it really the landfill space? Because it might be, I know I'm actually worried it's gonna get burned in an uncontrolled way. And then we have these other emissions in another place, so that's why I was inquiring about that. Are there any other kind of questions about how it's made or?
Well, just a little bit more on the turf disposal. Um, even if it is recycled, that takes up a huge amount of volume and is costly to dispose of in our landfill. Most likely, if it was recycled originally, it's being manufactured from recycled materials, not in our area, but the consumption of space in our landfill is local. So we just have to think about some of that stuff. And yes, recycling right now does put off the impact, but. Certain things can only be recycled so many times. As far as I know, there's not recycling happening of that material right now, but things are always changing. Yeah, and that the cost should be reflected in, and it probably is, I haven't gotten quite there yet, in the, um. Economic impact for disposal, yeah.
That's where I wrote it, yeah, for sure.
Just a question.
That has a question, hold on, sorry.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would just point out, it's downcycled, it's not recycled. It's just being used once again before it still goes to the landfill, because I don't think there's any evidence that artificial turf gets recycled. Is there, but perhaps our speaker knows of artificial turf that does get recycled? Does that happen?
Not sure, not done.
Can that go on the list? I think that's.
Yeah, end of life.
Yeah, exactly, and I think Mitra's point is well-made and, and that. That it isn't, it isn't affecting our landfill or where the materials came from. They weren't diverted from our landfill, so. It's.
But they will be consuming space in our landfill.
Right, and usually when you're recycling something, you're avoiding the natural extraction and the manufacturing of it elsewhere. That's usually the type of.
I just was gonna say that in anticipation of tonight's presentation, I looked up the health impacts of artificial turf. And, um, artificial turf cannot be recycled. And, um, and then later on, the, the authors also. Said what, uh, volatile organic compounds were in it, as well as the. Metals, and it was, it was a total of fifty-two chemicals, and that included PFAS. And plasticizers and all sorts of other things, as well as, um, metals. And, um, I was a chemistry teacher for about twenty-five years, and I. I was kind of concerned about the names that I saw in this, in this paper.
Please make sure we get the citation.
Okay.
Through some formal channel so that we can put that in our list of stuff to read.
Okay.
And we'll probably chase down what's, you know, citations inside of the citations.
Yeah, my question is more related to the overall site plan. Is it pretty well wedded to eight fields? You know, for the soccer fields, or might there be a mitigation of the impact if there was another field or two? So that the rotation was a little, um, broader, so that it's not as much wear and tear if there were ten instead of eight. Um, there's the room on the site to consider those long-term possibilities.
Uh, we can look at that. I, I, um, I think what you're saying is, hey, if. Would we need more natural grass fields to equal the playable hours?
Right, that we rotate, you know, if we've got more fields in the rotation, it's not so hard on the field.
Right.
And the other one that's, you know, came up earlier is that significant difference. Between baseball fields that are only used during the drier season. And soccer fields whose maximum use is gonna be spring and fall. Where, you know, like, you know, Lexi, Lexi lifted up that notion of, you know, one's a muddy field. And the other's a potential too hot field, so. And whether or not it even needs to be a total. Turf versus the new, you know, artificials. Or whether or not one set of fields has a particular, um, surface and the others, than the others.
Yeah, I, I think it's an option that can be looked at, uh, that probably fit in under the economics as well.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Um, and, um, just your comment about baseball and softball and the drier weather, my understanding is. That season generally starts around March, which is still pretty wet and.
It's drier, but now.
Other thoughts or questions on the environmental section?
There was mention in the, the one report just in passing about carbon sequestration. So I think that's something that, you know, I would be interested in kind of knowing a little more. About what the potential is for that particular kinds of turf and such.
I will say that vegetative sequestration almost always disappoints the folks we work in. And I will give you an example, and I, I say this with all due respect, because I, I, I know it matters. In drawdown, they say if we could optimize forests worldwide. And still have food growing and still be able to have some urban context, we could get to forty percent offset. Of our emissions that we are putting out in the air now. In our footprint of Lane County, which is one of the most forested counties in the United States. We saw that when you took the sequestration value of the trees relative to the emissions from four hundred thousand people. Four hundred thousand people, we could get to thirty-eight percent of our footprint offset. So we had, um, roughly nine and a half million metric tons per year. And we are seeing just short of four hundred, no, sorry, four million metric tons. From eighty-five percent forested land cover.
Right, well, and I realize when I think it through a little further, this is farmland now. We're not gonna end up with a net gain in sequestration by replacing it with turf.
Unless, unless those roots were cultivated to go deep over time. So we work with Organic Valley, and, uh, they pasture. Their animals in a way where they're trying to always remove only a portion of what is growing below. So they can say that on net, they're removing less than they're growing below ground. And that, it is, it is something, but the other thing is in the, in the carbon protocols. The, the additional carbon, like, when we looked at this for whether you grow. Native vegetation or shrubs or trees in highway right-of-ways for sequestration. It was barely visible at all with grasses. Uh, granted, we couldn't have fifty years of concentrated growth where we know we're pulling those roots down. A quick mnemonic, old growth dug fir forest an acre. Per year is roughly two metric tons, and average Pacific Northwest household family is about eighty-five metric tons to a hundred. A dug fir forest in rotation, forty-year rotation. Is about one metric ton per acre per year. So it always freaks people out, but we gotta turn the faucet off first before we try and sequester up everything. I, I see that with sadness, but it's what the math has shown us over and over and over.
Makes sense. We've got about.
Kelsey.
Four more minutes, does she still have her?
Kelsey, have you had your address?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to chime in with a quick comment that, um, regarding the, um, recycling. That historically, uh, turf was only able to be recycled in like one place on earth a number of years ago, so it used to be very difficult. Um, however, like literally for the last three years, there's, there, people have been recognizing that as an issue. And so I don't know a ton about it, but I do know that there are two, um, organizations or kind of like programs in the US right now that are kind of prototyping. Essentially being able to recycle turf and or buy turf that has been recycled, so you can buy used turf to install. Um, so I just wanted to note that again, that's like another topic where if we were talking about this five to ten years ago, that would be very challenging. But I think there's more options now, and that's certainly something we could all look into, which could be interesting.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, simple, simple one, it might be a can of worms. Just in general, what are the differing impacts on resident invertebrates? Subsurface or none?
I, should we get into, yes, soon?
I think that time for this is over unless we wanna extend again.
Okay.
And even though it's super important and.
I have to leave at seven twenty-five, just FYI, so, but it's fine to extend.
Are there other critical things on our?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it depends on your opinion of critical.
And I'm happy to take comments in another format, face to face, but.
Could we do our announcements from staff now and then use the rest of the time? Is that possible or?
I mean. I, I'm not sure why we would switch that particular one around, um.
I, I think thi- this would probably be a better use of, if, if you want to continue, this would be a better use of the commission's time.
Yeah, I agree with that too, so we have a second, so all in favor for ten more minutes? I can't, what's going on? But I think we're majority. Yeah, you guys are good, John? Okay. Alright, so what, that puts us at? Seven twenty-five?
Quick frame, two points of view on economics or on finance, right? One is the cost to the community to operate the facility. The other is, how does this recreation asset affect the economics of the areas around it in our community? So, one is what is the cost, and then what is, how does it benefit? Right, so. There is a cost benefit ratio here, but cost to the city to maintain. Which is about the life cycle management, right? And then economic benefit to the community, not just the neighbors, but the community at large, especially. If we're hosting tournaments that go beyond just the neighborhood. Those are the big picture things that show up in most of these studies. Is there anything about that in particular that you're interested in, or you, you wanna name?
I just wanna be over and make sure I understand that you will study. The potential revenue or cost recovery of operating the fields. Based on the length of play that can be. You know, created. So it's not just that the number of fields generated, whether they're natural or synthetic, it's that they will have different. Abilities to accommodate different, uh, venue needs, group needs, timeframes, and so that will be seen as part of the analysis.
Yes, and I appreciate you bringing it up, because I framed that around the cost, but there's also income opportunity to the rec department, right? The rec department does the programming, they bring in the dollars. The maintenance or parks maintenance will maintain it, they're bearing the cost, but that's shared in our public benefit or our city. And then there's the neighbors, or the store nearby, or the restaurant nearby, or the hotel. Or the other things people do when they come to town for, you know, a tournament or a turtle visit, or whatever the visit is, right? And so, I just wanna make sure that we separate the, the revenue and costs for the city. And then the benefit to the rest of the kind of community at large. And if there's more there, please speak up. I mean, that's an important point right there. It's not just cost.
Is, when you're, note, oh, sorry. When you're noting the cost of maintenance of, um, non, the natural turf. Is there something that could be designed in like capturing rainwater that could reduce cost of water or something like that?
I, I am not, uh, the one to ask that one, but I, I hear like a reservoir collects the rainwater and then pump it out later.
Yeah, like, I just don't know what goes into the cost of the ma- I assume, I mean, the cost of maintenance on the natural. Field is fertilizer and watering primarily. Mowing. Um, so can, can there be things involved that reduce that cost that come from the design? Aspects, I guess. And to piggyback on that a little bit too, because in the, in the, in the report, it's. That the, the water use is negligible between the two. Types of turf, the natural and the synthetic in the report. Because, I mean, as I read it, and I thought that was a surprise to me, I didn't know that. But because you have to water down the, the synthetic turf all the time, essentially you end up, it's a wa- it's a wash. Sorry, you fired me, Alexi, so, but, um, so that part is, it would be for either type of turf. Then it would be important to understand where is that water coming from and can, can that be mitigated in some way?
Is that drinking water, or is that from a well or from surface water? Okay, so, good design that might mitigate costs in the life cycle.
On either end, I guess, that would make it, yeah.
Um, and then, uh, water use and maybe water sourcing?
We've got a lot of water around here.
Yeah. Any other thoughts about, um. A lot of the economic benefit would be expressed in dollars or in FTEs. But I do wanna say, having looked at a lot of FTEs, there's FTEs and there's FTEs. A brain surgeon's FTE is very different than, you know, a pizza delivery person's FTE. So that's one thing that we'll try and normalize to a certain amount.
Are you considering any way to translate, uh, environmental implications into dollar values? Like, that's often done with wetlands, there's a certain dollar value of an acre of wetland.
Uh, if that was something we're looking at, etc. Yeah, we, we, if we were like, if one of the questions was, hey, are we gonna have wetland takings? And what's the cost of mitigation, and we would look at that certainly, but I'm not gonna say.
In this case, the turf thing isn't, it's not.
Right.
It's like an extra.
And so here's, here's one of the, so greenhouse gases is one of those places where people put an economic value on it all the time, right? Like, the price of that is highly debatable. Uh, the state current price, we'll see if the, uh, climate protection program is rebirth tomorrow. It was somewhere around a hundred and eight dollars a metric ton. Last year's voluntary credit price hovered around six dollars and fifty cents a metric ton. There's different quality, but usually what makes an offset more valuable is better story value. It's not actually the, the benefit of the G. It's not actually the the benefit of the GHGs. Um, so there's some stuff in there that we would qualify if we were to put a price on it.
Yeah.
We'd say by this price or by the state of Oregon's, you know. Social cost of carbon or by the mortality cost of carbon, which includes. Uh, the cost of people dying from climate change and the impact of the loss of their productivity. Like there's a big range and it goes from about four bucks a metric ton to about three hundred something. So if we monetize anything, we're gonna qualify our units. Because the, I mean, one answer could look great and one answer could look horrible and they could be identical, right? In the impact, so we want to be clear about that.
Okay.
Great question.
So we've probably got time for maybe two more comments. So if if anyone has two more comments.
It's great to hear. Oh.
One more?
I just want to say. Really intense um research and right detail, I. I'm grateful for that much information because that makes the decisions. Sometimes easier.
Sometimes easier. That way the lay elected parties can know everything about everything.
But it's a big project and uh you could have come back with much less information.
The the smallest project we've done a formal TBL on. Is usually about a twenty million dollar public investment. That seems to be somewhere around where people say we gotta look at this really carefully. Not always the same though, you know, twenty million here and twenty million there could be. Big differences, but. As we've done a similar study for the wastewater authority in looking at what they would. Do with their effluent, which is two degrees warmer eff than the temperature of the streams when they want to release it. And we studied riparian shade versus mechanical means and other uses and. There are surprises all over it, but great answers, but it was only because of the investment in the study. So my thanks to the sponsors.
So I'm, could I chime in? Um. Since we're just wrapping up this discussion, Carolyn, I'm wondering if I could kick it back to you and if you could talk about what your intentions are with how you want to bring this back to the commission.
Sure, thanks Danielle. Um. Well, so um obviously there's a lot of work ahead of us, um ahead of you. Um, and um, so um. Our concept was that we would take your feedback, um that we would begin to scope out. What this next phase of works looks like, what it's gonna cost, you know, we don't have a limitless budget and if we did want to caveat that earlier. But this has been really helpful to understand kind of where the priorities are and where the real concerns are. Um, and then um we're going to do that research. And I, we don't know how long it's gonna take yet, and then we would like to bring it back to this um commission for you to review. And provide input into. Um. And at that point, we'll be um making the best decision we can based on the information that we have. So that's. That's the plan.
So based on the timeline that you presented earlier, can you like? Give a like. Which month, right?
I think I'm thinking six to nine months, but but it's it's. After you get through the first wave of research and you start filling out the table, you start to see how much trouble is there. Meaning. Uh, where are the the holes in the data? And also, we have to sit with the maintenance and operations and recreational folks and say, hey, tell us the truth. About how much resource it takes and personnel hours to keep one of these things going. So it'll be a mix of real local. Data from experience and research combined. But I'd say six to nine months is a safe, safe answer. Uh, it's not a hard and fast, but we would hope to have that wrapped up in that timeframe. Um. The only thing that changes uh over that kind of timeframe in this space. Unless there's a technology revolution that breaks midway, I don't think there's gonna be anything that changes it. We're studying like. Energy storage and battery uh chemistry, that's something that changes within six months completely. So um, so this stuff seems to be pretty stable from from my point of view.
That what you wanted, Danielle?
Yeah, I think that's good. I mean, I think um. Me and Devin and, you know, with city leadership too, we're just sort of gonna be talking about how to fit this in. Either this fiscal year work plan or if this fits into the next one, so um. To the commissioners, I guess it sounds like this could possibly come back to you before June. Um, and if not, then, you know, it'll be up to you if you want to include it in next year's work plan, and if you have strong opinions about that, you know, talk to Devin. That means basically. I mean, that basically means that bringing this topic back, if that happens in June, that could kick some of the other topics off the work plan. That's what I'm trying to say. Um, anyways, I think we've got to wrap this up just so we can get to the rest of the agenda, but um thank you so much, Josh and Carolyn.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was, that was really productive eating.
Thank you.
I mean, presentation discussion. Thanks. Alright.
We just greet my neighbor.
We've been in virtual rooms. So crazy.
Okay.
But one of these days we'll pass the train, we've been giving George Rex.
Oh, good.
Yeah. So we wanted to um take a few minutes and express gratitude. As it says here in the agenda, so we almost expressed gratitude to Councilor Semple for her service. And her support of the commission.
Thank you.
And.
Danielle, I have nothing to say, but we did a couple very small tokens of appreciation, one just that uh uh, one, a cake.
A cake! Oh, the seven years were worth it.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah.
Time, effort, and passion and guidance and everything you've done for this commission, for this city. And just, we're really sincerely, but we really appreciate everything you've done. For me, my two and a half years here and extending well beyond that. Um, you know, you've been a true asset for the city, we really appreciate your time.
Well, like they say, right back at you.
And your and your decision to make this a priority in your work as a counselor is kind of the epitome of. Thinking, you know, acting locally in a way that has global impact. Uh, that's, you know, that's walking that kind of. So, thank you.
Before I was on council and I would come and talk, I would say. I'm working on world peace, starting with you. So, well, I've I've really enjoyed it, especially because of the energy and dedication and persistence. And the commission is a role model for. I wrote this down, so important, um. A role model for resident connection and information. That implements change and connection between people and. So thank you for um your willingness to learn and to share that learning, because that's how we're really gonna make the changes.
No, Jan's gonna say something.
Well, just a little, I just, you've been a tremendous advocate and support and it's it's been super helpful and it's been really great working with you. Thank you very much for that. You're very welcome. And let's, you know, keep on working, we've got a lot to do.
I wanted to thank you specifically for your support in the mayor meetings that we had, but last year with Jan and now this year with me turning myself like. That helping us navigate that a little bit was very, thank you very much.
Very welcome. Well, it's, it's really been a pleasure to work with everyone and it's been bittersweet as this year's gone. You know, I'm excited for whatever it is I decide to do and it's a bit of a relief, but. Um, ah, it's been hard, it's like grief.
Mm-hmm.
So it's an interesting transition and amazing experience. I never expected to be in government.
So.
Shall we?
Yeah, so get a get a piece of cake and then we'll do the. Then we'll do the um, the council staff updates while everyone is shoving cake in their mouth.
I love cake.
Exactly. No, please, it's right there. There's plates and forks and all kinds of things and a big night. It's a very large.
It's home and savor all the word up, because I'm gonna eat cake.
Yeah, eat the cake and so, because we're already late, so we'll just. We'll double up on activities, cake eating and updates.
You just give virtual cake.
There's a code though.
There is a code. It's three, eight, one. Want it? It's on the board too. See, now you've filled up on nuts.
No way, no way, Zach. There's room for cake.
Oh, cake delivery, that's.
Cake delivery.
I'm not having cake.
No, you're passing on the cake.
Come on, Devin, you were supposed to.
I know I'm supposed to eat cake for you, but I don't like cake. Ah, I know. Pie is better than cake.
Pie.
Every time. Berry pie with crust on top, because it's really about the crust.
I agree, berry pie is the best.
I'm sure everyone will, you have two then, you have mine. And Danielle's. She's gonna have three.
What kind of cake is it?
Um, it's a white, it's light, light, kind of little.
Something white cake with the berries.
Very filling.
Uh-huh, I like the cream cheesy crust.
And I see you salivating too.
Maybe. Maybe Ian can put one in your office for you.
It's a bomb.
It'll last for a few days.
I'll test positive or test negative, make sure I test negative tomorrow.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Alright, so. Wonderful.
Whatever it was.
Now that you're eating, we can, you can have Ian do staff updates first. While Emily shoves cake. Danielle, do you want to do the staff update?
Yeah, I can go ahead and do updates since uh.
Since you're not having cake.
I'll remind you all again. Um, so, yeah, I I don't have too many updates. Um, the one. Bigger update is um Ian and I are preparing to go to city council again um. In December, on December ninth, as providing an update to council on our building decarbonization work, uh basically. December ninth. Um, I believe you all semi-tracked our presentation in July. Um, when we shared the results of our engagement and boiled that down to basically like six themes and sixteen strategies. And since then, we've been meeting with a lot of partners and identifying the actual projects that um, you know. We believe should be prioritized, so that's what we will be presenting to city council in December, and I highly recommend you watch it. Uh. In terms of the commission. There's no meeting in December, but it sounds like there's a couple committee meetings, so uh that will be the way that we meet in December. And we'll meet again in January. And in January, the topic is about the Clean Lane Resource Recovery Facility. So that's what was previously known as the IMERF.
The clerk. The IMERF is now the clerk.
Oh, good.
Resource recovery, yeah, facility, right? So, um, that's bad. Anyways, so basically, if you've been tracking that project, Lang County Commissioners um voted to approve the building of a. Um. Material resource, material recovery facility that can process waste and sort it and divert it into um. Other streams and they'll be per um also part of it will be an anaerobic digester that can process that waste and turn it into. Recover the methane from it. Um, so. I am not the expert on this topic and the uh Lang County Jeff Orlandini will be coming to present. So, right now though, it's always helpful for me to have a list of questions from commissioners. Um, just sort of off the top of your head, what types of questions do you have about this project? So that I can make sure the presentation um, you know, fits your interests. So if we could take a little bit of time right now just to come up with a list of questions, that would be really helpful for me.
Go ahead, John.
I've heard that only twenty-five percent of the organics are going to be recovered. Is that a false number? I'm sure they'll present that.
Okay.
I don't remember from the presentation before. I think it's more than that, but. But uh.
That's a good question to have.
Yeah, that's a great question, because I can't remember from last. I shouldn't say anything. Um. And I know it's a lot of pressure to like come up with the questions right now in the moment when you haven't reviewed materials and things like that, but. You know. Um, you can always email within a a certain amount of time before the presentation. Um, what, two weeks you like, around there?
Yeah, two weeks would be best. No, I mean.
That's a great way to get those questions out. If you, you know, you're in the shower and you think of the question and you're like, oh damn, just email Danielle the question.
I have one we can put out there. I'm just curious. I'm sure they're aware of the. Biggest um points of contention for the community, so clarifying. Um misinformation or. On those points, I think that's a big role that we could all play. There's a lot of confusion about some of these facts, these points, like one of the numbers is like, how many years does it extend our landfill lifespan? Um. So, but, you know, there's like confusion somehow about that stuff, so.
Yeah.
They would be aware of like what those biggest points of contention are and then just. How we can help them.
Yeah. And, you know, of course, we're getting all the single hauler or, you know. Spam. And our, you know, in the emails about how terrible it's gonna be.
Impact to local to haulers.
Right, and the impact to haulers and like what are they doing to address the impact to local haulers? I think that would be important. Um, I mean, for us, we're talking about the city of Eugene, it's a, you know, it's a county. Landfill, but.
Sure.
So we wanna.
Well, that's a good question too, that, um, you know, what is the role of the city in this, maybe?
And like, what is the actual cost? It will increase people's bills. I know that's another.
I think they have a range.
They've been modeling.
Yeah.
I know the city's done some remodeling as well on what this.
Did you hear that, Danielle? The the pretend, the projected impact to customers.
Yep.
I think I I would want to make sure that there's telling us something about projected impact. If it gets built and if it doesn't, because there's costs either way.
Yeah, that's really good point, for sure.
Right, so the cost of doing nothing. A cost.
Always clear on that.
Anything else?
Okay. Um, one thing that I always think about a little bit is. Be, it's what it does is it takes organic waste out of the garbage stream, right? And I'm curious if there's, I I've just heard like things from like people in the community, not like rumors or things like that. But like wondering, oh, does that mean? And I I know this is probably not true, but people have asked me, oh, does that mean that we're not gonna have mixed recycling anymore? We just can put everything in the garbage? No, I realize that, but like, how is the, how are they gonna address that and keep people? From thinking that and putting everything in the garbage instead of putting.
Yeah, or compost, upside composting.
Correct, also that, but it's paper too. But yeah.
Yep.
Like, how are they gonna assuage the confusion? Because people don't want to do it anyway. They don't need more reasons not to do it.
This is a pretty good list. Um, Ian, do you have any?
And I would, and I don't know if it fits, but I think it would be good to understand where they actually are in the. Where they actually are in the financial piecing of it. I guess that's the part I don't. Know that if. I think there's a lot of things that still have to fall into place and it.
I think there's a lot of things that still have to fall into place and it. See, it's confusing to know whose role is what and where they are in that marching through that path. So I think there, the lender, there's all kinds of things and I'm assuming he's gonna cover that, but. Anyway, that's probably not a sustainability question thing.
Though they talked about it, they talked all about it before when we had a presentation, yeah. Those are way early on.
So they were probably much earlier in yeah, March and now they're.
Right. And I think that's a great question. Alright. Thanks Danielle, did you have anything else for staff update? Do we have anything for commissioner updates? No, if we do.
Um, I sent an email, but I'm just confirming that. Uh, we're pushing MUPD stuff because the council has approved accelerated, that's um, multi-unit. Property tax exemption. Um, there's some kerfuffle and frugal about uh. Considering uh. Stripping out public benefit provisions, which would impact green building potentially. Uh, as part of an accelerated MUPD, council passed an accelerated MUPD that does retain public benefit provisions. Um, and it's a topic we're gonna come back into in a couple months when it is more in time with when it might be back in front of council or if it's relevant.
Sounds good.
Ian, I don't know if you wanna clarify.
No, I think Danielle might have a thought, but I think staff's gonna be coming at some point in the next calendar year, um, and. Talking about MUPD, will you part of that presentation just to update kind of the the broader, the bigger MUPD? Um, and kind of, you know, where that is and what their opportunities might be to weigh in on kind of reconsideration of things that are part of that larger program.
Yeah, I still think it's valuable for us to look at that and potentially have some thoughts on the matter. Uh, it just doesn't have to happen right now.
Yeah, I a hundred percent agree. I think, you know, a letter from the commission about. MUPD and green building requirements would be perfectly um, well received by city council. Especially certain members of city council, but I think this letter would be better written if you hear from staff first. About like where they're at in the process and stuff, so that was just my request was like, can we wait to do this till after staff come? And they're planning to come in March, so that still gives three months after that for you guys to get a letter together.
Perfect, thank you both. Great, and then.
Update from council. Last one, um, was already mentioned, December ninth, update on building decarbon, December eleventh revenue for.
They're actually.
Then we're not doing that anymore.
No, it's gonna be on the same day now.
Same day.
They're both being the ninth.
More cake. So yes, so so tune in on the night for. Some sustainability climate info.
Break leg, Danielle.
And a big thank you from council, me in specific, for all your work. And everything you're gonna do in the future.
Alright. Well. Second, you're good. Thank you, Emily.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everyone.
Hi Danielle, I hope just you feel better soon.
Thank you.